Awesome.
Hi, Carrie.
Awesome, thanks. And yeah, and so I mean, the other thing is this room can, this Zoom room can be, can be left on record, you know, executive session and with nothing up on the screen and all until you come back and proper because we'll, yeah, yeah, it's just so as you don't forget to like start the recording when you come back again, all that kind of stuff.
Sounds good.
Cool. All right, guys. Have a good meeting. Leave your capable hands here.
Hi Curtis.
Steve, is that you?
Yep.
Okay. Jake M., are we waiting for other Jake?
Uh, I think we are good to go. Other Jake is not able to be here tonight, so.
Okay. I think we're all here then, so we can get started. I would like to call the Mount Greylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, January 11th, 2024, and it is 6:01 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. If my committee could, roll call in alphabetically by last name, that'd be great.
Bo in here.
Conry here.
Constantine here.
Elfenbein here.
Green here.
Malloy here.
Steve, are you there? Okay, I sort of heard him. Steve, your, your connection is not very good right now. All right, we will proceed. At Mount Greylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectations and cooperation, resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Jake, is Charlotte coming?
Uh, Charlotte, I believed was coming, but Charlotte is also right on the edge of, stepping into another program for a semester, a very exciting leadership program. So, she, hard to believe, but she may be even busier than she generally is, balancing everything that she balances. So if she's able to join us later, I hope we can hit pause and take her in, but understood if she couldn't be here this evening.
Perfect. Um, as far as public comment, I have not received any via email and I don't see any members of the public currently on here, so we can move on to approval of minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the December 14th, 2023 minutes? So move. Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantina, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, abstain.
Miller, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Next up, we have the principals' reports. Um, Jake, who is doing the first item? The foundation? Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one. We are very grateful, as always, as is tradition, to the Alice Shaver Foundation for Student Travel. A thank you letter has been sent upon receipt of that very generous annual gift that supports student trips. So again, on behalf of the district and particularly on behalf of Mount Greylock Regional School, uh, many, many thank yous to the Alice Shaver Foundation for the continued deep support for providing students opportunities um, for field trips.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Alice Shaver Foundation 5,000 donation to fund school trips?
Miller, so moved and I.
We'll say Green moved and Miller seconded.
Yep.
Did you want to say something, Steve?
Uh, yes, just for the record, they have the wrong name of the school and the wrong principal on the letter.
Yes, yeah, I, I think they've been sending it that way for quite some time.
Yes.
Hard to say goodbye to Mary McDonald. I, I completely, uh, we all get that.
Yeah. But it's also the wrong name of the school.
Thank you. Any, just any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfenbein, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Next up on the agenda are school council budget inputs from the three schools.
I think we'll, uh, we have on the agenda, starting with, uh, with, with Nolan and then moving on to Cindy and Jake is, is, uh, having a meeting with this as the primary topic tomorrow afternoon and, you know, just so, so everybody's aware of the, 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 the conversations we've been having around budget is, um, and, and Joe will get into more detail on this, uh, before the evening's over, but we, we have very little information on which to, to build a budget this year. Sort of the biggest piece that's missing is, is where chapter 70 is going, the way the state funds and supports its public schools. Um, what we do anticipate just from, you know, keeping our, uh, our, our, our eyes and our ears on, on what's going on across the state budgetarily and what's going on with our neighboring districts budgetarily, is that this is likely to be one of those budget years where we are really focusing in hard on what do we have to do? And not as much on what would we like to do? And that, um, any additions, uh, particularly around staffing will likely need to be met with, with proportional reductions elsewhere. So, uh, is, that's, that's the happy conversation we have been having with our principals as, as they have moved on to work with their school council. So with, with that, I will, uh, hand off to Nolan. Uh, Nolan, if you would be okay kicking us off.
Yeah, of course. Uh, good, yeah, good evening, everyone. Um, so our school council consists of community members, parents, and teachers, and we started in October thinking about the budget. Um, and that conversation is what data do we want to look at as we make our decisions? So we looked at everything from MCAS data, attendance, uh, teacher input, FastBridge, um, and there's overall community feeling towards Lanesboro Elementary School, and we came up with kind of three things that we want to focus our budget process on, and that is making sure that we have appropriate staffing to support all students. Um, if you're looking for an exact number of teachers, et cetera, et cetera, that's hard to give because our school is, in the last month alone, it's fluctuated by five or six students um, leaving and entering that have, you know, needs. Um, so I just want to make sure that we always focus on having the adults and the professionals necessary to be with our students. Uh, the second is supportive curriculum. So this is curriculum for special education teachers and our tier, uh, our interventionist. That is vast. I think when we talk about curriculum for special education, uh, special education teachers and our interventionist is, it's not one thing. We're helping students that are all over the map that have different needs and finding something that can meet all the students' needs is tricky. And what we do now is kind of, I won't say wing it because wing it's not the right term to use, but we find our own stuff. And we are now piloting some stuff like Number Worlds, and we're hoping to nail something down for math as we move forward. The last thing that the school council is asking for is, um, to continue to think about short throw projectors. We now have four in our building, and we like to continue to slowly roll it out so that way, when they start to die, we don't have to have a big purchase ever in our future when it comes to short throw projectors. Um, we have four in the impact, having students up at the board, using those markers. Um, it's a great engagement tool with math in the LA. So, that's all I have. What questions do you have for me?
I think you have the floor, Cindy.
Great. Hi, everybody. Happy New Year. Um, pretty similar to what Nolan said. Our school council really started work in October and November, just having preliminary conversations about what, what goes into our budget, what are the requests of teachers, what are the requests of our community members? Um, and one of the things that I think has been a really thoughtful conversation so far from the school council is they really wanted some up-to-date information from the requests of teachers. So Griffin and I at our latest staff meeting really said to our teachers, if we were to design a budget right now, what are the things that you can think of that you feel like would really support instruction and meet the students' needs the best? Um, and that was information that was really important to hear for the school council. Um, initial reports from our staff is they would like to bring back the math interventionist position and potentially add a special education teacher. And I say both of those things with transparency with both the staff and the school council, which is those are requests from right now, you know, January of 2024, knowing that we have many months to go, but we're also going to be looking at the data to make sure that the data for our students really drives what we're asking for in the budget. Um, and it's, it's really going to be a careful examination. The school council has been able to look at MCAS so far. The school council has been able to look at the fall FastBridge scores, but we're also really looking collectively across our school as to what the student needs will be. Um, and it's definitely been some interesting conversations from the school council, wanting to really truly understand what's in the budget currently, what do we feel like is missing? One of the conversations is traditionally at Williamstown, we have not had um, kind of a wide array of after-school clubs, like the middle and high school, and it's something that we've been working throughout this school year to bridge the gap and have similar after-school clubs. Um, we've been working with Jake's team to be able to have the multicultural student union be present at the elementary school as well as our rainbow club, which is the LGBTQ plus club that's mimicked from the high school. And so those are things um, that we want to make sure are reflected in next year's budget so that both of those clubs have some sort of operating costs. It's minimal, but it's important to us to have those clubs built into the budget because those are initiatives that we have started have been very fruitful as far as student involvement and staff involvement, and we want to make sure those are included. And as we go forward in the next month or two, we are going to be continuing to go through the current budget line by line, but ultimately specifics as far as whether or not we will need a special education teacher, need a math interventionist will be really derived from the data and discussions further with staff and the school council. Are there any questions? Jose?
Thanks, Cindy. And this, this question, apologies, thank you for that, and thank you both to, uh, you and Nolan for your presentations. This is, um, I, I think is a question for, for Jake and Joe. And Jake, you, you mentioned that in this budget climate that we're going to find ourselves in, that, uh, you know, new staff positions might require reductions, whatever those might look like elsewhere. And Cindy just laid out, in my mind, or at least to me, three potential needs, um, for, for Williamstown Elementary. And, um, what would you recommend to Cindy and her team or Nolan and his team regarding, you know, how they might move forward to make those asks a reality? Or, 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 yeah?
I thi- I think we look at what we, we annually look at, uh, when we're, we're faced with these kind of, uh, choices, which is to first take a look at, is, is there any place where just as responsible leaders, we potentially could make adjustments to full-time staffing members or even moving full-time to part-time because we are, we are overstaffed, staffed. I would, I would not want to be put on the spot to talk about that because that is, I don't believe we have many, if any, areas where that's a reality. Um, I, I think the, the, my best advice to these folks as we all work together and I, and if Jake Schutz were here, I, I think he might be coming in with, with the same type and number of requests that, that Cindy came in with. Uh, that we, we look at, okay, that may not be feasible. Are there, are there places in existing employee schedules where we could get some of these services? And can we continue to make the ground ready to bear riper, better, faster fruit when the time comes that we are able to swing some of these changes? Uh, it's, it's, I think it's, you, you probably put your, your finger on the pulse of why Joe and I, and I'm certain in other ways Nolan and Cindy and Jake and then the rest of our admin team kind of dread budget season rolling around. But, you know, I, I think our advice would be just that's, look at what we have, look at what we're doing, and see if there's any way to get any piece of what we want and need to do. That, that doesn't disrupt programming that we're, that we're already obligated to provide. It's a tough one, Jose.
Thanks, Cindy. Thanks, Jay.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Cindy or Nolan? Okay, moving along. Thank you very much, Cindy and Nolan. Uh, Director's Report, Curriculum Director, Curriculum Update from Joelle Bruckner.
Hello, I'm going to share my screen. I just have a few slides tonight for this piece.
You, let's see.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Um, so hello to everybody and Happy New Year. Um, let me, one second. It's not letting me advance. I'm gonna stop my sharing. I'm using two screens and Ellie's gonna laugh at me, but I'm still not completely fluent in the two-screens business. One second. Let's try this. Do you see that? Yeah, okay. Um, okay, so tonight I thought it would be a great opportunity to shine a light on one of our programs that we don't talk about very often, um, and that is our multilingual learner program. Um, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about that and tell you our status because we've had some, over the past five years since we've been a district, um, we've had some real exciting increases. So, um, this first slide is just, um, and I'll, I don't think this is in your packet, but I'll make sure that Carol gets it to add it. Um, we have a multitude of languages, some diversity in language, which is nice. Um, a little bit of a background for people who don't know, um, you will hear different districts call this English as a second language. So ES, um, ELL, um, ESL, we, we're calling it multilingual learners as a way to honor the fact that at, looking at as a, um, not as a deficit approach, but as a, as a real positive thing that we have students in our district who speak multiple languages, and that is really, really wonderful. Whenever someone registers in the district, their, part of the registration packet is a home language survey, so we're surveying all incoming families. If anyone indicates a language that is spoken at home that is a language other than English, then we reach out to the family, we screen, um, students, and then based on, we use, uh, the Weta Screener. Um, and if it's a pre-K student, we use a different screener. You don't need to know that information. Um, based on how a child performs, a student performs, they will be identified or not identified as needing English language instruction. These are, these are just some recommended guidance, um, minutes for, uh, how much direct instruction students will get from a certified English language learner instructor. Um, so we currently have two full-time ELL teachers or MLL teachers. One is working full-time at the middle high school, and one is splitting time between Lanesboro Elementary and Williamstown Elementary. These are the levels, um, of students. The majority of our students fall into the foundational level. Uh, and there are a number of students who are close to getting to the transitional level. Uh, we have a few students in the transitional level, but the majority of them require a, a number of minutes, quite a lot of, um, direct instruction from our, um, MLL teachers. There's another, just a caveat at the bottom. We currently don't have any students that call S-Life, but students with limited or interrupted formal education, English learners. But I put this here because if there's, there's a different set of guidance for students who come to us with, um, this sort of a background and there's a lot of variation in the need in terms of staffing. And, um, so you may hear from us in the future that, oh, we have a new student, and so we might need additional support. Currently, we're, we're holding our own. We provide services, direct instruction services for students in first through, first grade through 12th grade. We monitor our preschool students and our kindergarten students. Won't read the slide to you. Um, but Jennifer Jones, who is currently our elementary MLL teacher, is in close contact with the preschool and kindergarten teachers where we have identified students. And, um, but the theory is, the thought is that those at that age, the classrooms are really rich with language already. And so in collaboration with the MLL teacher, students are really getting the language-rich experiences that they need. Um, this is the stuff that I thought would interest you the most, but this is looking at from the past few years where we've gone. In fiscal year 2019, we had in the district three MLL students. This year we have 32, and that is K through 12. There are also three identified students in, um, preschool. So this is the enrollment by grade, as you can see. Um, I was thankful to Rob Winook for getting me the historical, uh, data on this. And, but it was really kind of exciting for me to put the graphs together because I've known that we're getting more students, and with those students bringing just wonderful diversity in many, many ways to our district. You will probably hear lots of districts talking about students coming and going. We have a very, you know, going back to this slide, we've kind of got a pretty steady climb and knowing who the families are, they're not going anywhere. You know, these people are families who've come and are living and, you know, I'm not expecting people to be moving lots. Some school districts are, are dealing with lots of coming and going. So we, we use a sheltered English immersion model for classes, which basically means that students are in regular English-speaking classes with their peers. Um, and I think it's the next slide. Um, all core academic teachers are required to obtain an SEI endorsement. It's specialized training to make sure that we are meeting the needs and, and teachers know how to differentiate instruction and so that students are all having access to the same rigorous grade-level instruction regardless of their English learning status. We, you know, it's been, all new teachers coming out of, um, new teacher programs are holding the endorsement, and it's been, it's been the work of the past five years to get all of the teachers in the district who need to have the endorsement, um, in the place where they need to. And we currently have everybody endorsed or in, in a class right now. And I'm thankful to, um, our superintendent and assistant superintendent and for supporting this work. We, the district has been supporting, paying for classes for teachers to get the SEI endorsement. And it's very much appreciated by faculty. Um, so, something that's, with the growth in our population has come our desire to really highlight how wonderful it is to have students who can speak multiple languages. So this is our first year at the high school, uh, participating in the SEAL of Bili literacy program. And this is federal, but this is our state Massachusetts, um, SEAL of Bili literacy. That's the official SEAL right there. And it is awarded to students who demonstrate proficiency in two or more languages. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, the purpose really is to encourage students to, and, and to show that we value, um, speaking multiple languages and to recognize, recognize the, uh, the value of diversity of languages. And we really hope that this will be another way to say, you know, this is, this is just amazing. We also know that we live in a community where there are many, many families who speak more languages, and they may never have been identified as, um, English language learning students, but there are lots of families who speak more than one language in our community. So this, this will be, um, available to anyone. Um, these are just the participating Western Mass districts. This, these are the, um, requirements. So somebody, a student who, we're, this is completely self-selecting. We have sent out a survey. Um, families are able to say, yes, I would like to participate in this program. So far, we have seven students who have self-identified as wanting to take this assessment. Um, they have to evolve past the MCAS. There's a different distinction. You can get, um, a SEAL of Bili literacy with this distinction if you have a higher MCAS score, and then we will be administering in April, world language assessments. And people who, who meets, score benchmarks for that will be awarded the, the seal on their diplomas. Yeah, and I'd said six here, but we had somebody sign up today. Um, so we're also, the other thing that we're trying this year is to offer this assessment to our AP Spanish students because we're, we're interested to know how the assessments will compare. So that will be something, it won't be required, but, um, something that we'll be offering to AP students. And I should say that, um, there's no cost for this for families because we wrote a grant and we were able to obtain funding to pay for the assessments. It's not a huge expenditure anyhow, so that I hope moving forward we'll be able to continue to support this. But this year we have a grant to be able to do that. And that is all that I have about multilingual learners. Um, but it's, it's really exciting. I've been in touch with a lot of the districts in the county. Um, we're seeing the same trends. Um, we, there, you know, Pittsfield's an outlier. They have hundreds of students who have been identified. Um, but our population is up there, uh, even relative to schools like ours and districts like ours. So, um, it's, it's really exciting.
Thank you, Joelle. This is really exciting. It's great to hear about this because I'm sure everyone feels that the diversity of language is increasing in the county, and so it's awesome to hear the support that, um, we're providing to our students and families. It's fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Joelle, could you remind us, how many languages do we teach currently in our schools?
We currently have Spanish and Latin.
And only at the seven through 12 level, is that right?
Yes. And it would be wonderful if we had languages in the elementary school, and it would be wonderful if we offered more languages in the middle high school.
Any other questions for Joelle? Thank you so much for that presentation. That's great.
Thanks.
Okay, up next on the agenda is the Finance Subcommittee Report. Carrie?
Uh, thanks, Christina. We just met, and, uh, Joe has a few things that he can share with you. Joe, is this in finance or in, do you have a separate, yeah, okay. So finance, uh, just looking at the budget very, very preliminarily. Um, and Joe has some, I think you're going to share a And Joe has some, I think you're going to share a document, is that right?
Yes, there, there was a late addition to your packet of a PDF of a preliminary, very preliminary. I, I use both preliminary and draft and partial to indicate that nobody should put a ton of stock into what is in that PDF. I would hate for people to turn around and make any declarations about what the FY25 budget will look like. But before, before I screen share that PDF, it's, it's very early in, in the budget development process. We do not yet have preliminary figures from the state as far as chapter seventy or chapter seventy-one. So we're still really flying blind with that fairly significant chunk of funding and information around it. We, we also don't have any firm numbers around any, any grant funding. But what we do know is the federal government is in discussions around potential cuts with title grant funding. Title one for us, for instance, is, let's just use round numbers tonight, let's call it a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If they were to cut that by fifty percent, we'd be looking at a seventy-five thousand dollar reduction in our grant funding, all other things equal. So we're keeping an eye on that and, you know, it, it would have an extraordinary impact, that, a, a, a cut in title funding for many urban schools in the state. For us, it, it would have a significant impact that we, that we will need to take into account when we do put a budget forward for adoption in March. So we're, we're keeping an eye there in terms of sources of revenue. We're still really flying kind of just without any of the inputs that we need in order to know what we will then be asking of our towns. With respect to staff, which I don't have in the PDF here tonight, we're trying to finalize what our look ahead is in terms of retirements and, and natural departures, staff moving out of the area, things like that. So we're trying to figure out what naturally happens with staff movement and how that will impact the numbers that we bring forward. By the time we hit February, and we do have two, two meetings hopefully of the school committee in February and then the public hearing in March. By the time we hit February, we'll have firm numbers, FTEs and dollar signs associated with that so that we can have intelligent discussions there. But I will say that just based on our contracts and the, the bulk of staff being known within those, we're looking at a two and a half to three percent increase on the overall budget in terms of expenditures, just based on those staff remaining in their positions and naturally seeing the increases associated with their union contracts. So that's a combination of moving up steps, meaning increasing in seniority and in some situations, making what we call column movement, which is somebody achieves a master's who currently has a bachelor's degree, things like that. So we're going to get into it in a lot of detail in February. I just want to kind of get, give you those ballpark numbers based on what we're thinking right now to set the tone for plenty of discussions that we're, that we're going to have. Now I'm going to share the, the non-staff preliminary budget. It is in your packet as well in case these numbers in the screen size don't translate well onto your screen. As we look down through the FY24 column, that is as we have adopted it for, for this year. So all of that is our current year budget. FY25 proposed, in most situations here, we have not yet updated the figure for FY25. So we're still working with departments, we're still working with contracts, trying to make sure that we've got firm numbers to put forward into FY25 proposed. But I do want to highlight as we scroll down areas where either we already know some things or where we know that we're waiting on some fairly important information as we look forward towards February and then March. So as we scroll down through here, I'm not going to go line by line. If people have questions, certainly I can field questions. But as we look at transportation, we, we're, we're entering another year of a known contract with our general ed transportation provider. We are looking at about a three percent increase between this year and next year with them. So that's what you see reflected here in the change between FY24 and FY25 proposed. You'll see that consistent, that percentage consistent across the three schools. So here, we're looking at Lanesboro Elementary. These rows, by the way, that, these have not changed from last year to this year. So they're, they're consistent as far as the types of expenditures that fall within each line. As we keep on scrolling down, the first orange highlighted figure that has not changed yet, but that definitely or almost definitely will, is the insurance for active employees line, which is health insurance. Berkshire Health Group will be meeting in late January or early February to adopt its rates for fiscal year twenty-five. So far, a lot of the rumblings that, that we're receiving through the larger group are that we'll probably see increases there. To what extent those figures increase is, is unclear at the moment. But I think we all need to brace for anywhere between zero and ten percent. And, and I don't think it will be zero, I, I think that it will be, will be something, something that needs to be reckoned with within the rest of our budget. If it was ten percent, we, we'd be looking at some, some pretty sizable increases. As you look at, this is solely at Lanesboro Elementary School. You, you also, as we scroll down in orange, you'll see the same orange row existing for Mount Greylock and Williamstown Elementary School and district-wide staff. So as you see, the first thing that pops up here for Mount Greylock is its health insurance figure. Good news, now that I've delivered some of that, you know, news that just might make your tummy rumble. We've got debt retirement and debt service. These numbers here are, are baked in based on the long-term borrowing that we completed in June of 2023. So that was the final borrowing for the Mount Greylock Regional School Building Project. So these numbers here for the, the principal and interest payments that we'll be going through next year, those are final. A caveat that we all need to remind ourselves of is between now and March, depending upon what decisions we end up making around how much we want to be prepared to borrow associated with the field and track project, so up to eight hundred thousand dollars in borrowing. That will drive increases in these two lines around paying down principal and paying interest. So if we were to borrow a full eight hundred thousand dollars, we'd probably be looking at about a fifty or sixty thousand dollar increase in fiscal year twenty-five and then for a number of years to come. So that's just a placeholder right now to, to have. We have started discussions to get updated projections over the course of the next few weeks from our bond council around what types of specific figures we should have in place if we want to project that we will be doing the full borrowing. So we'll be bringing more of that to you in February as well. And then the, the final highlighted row here for Mount Greylock and you'll see this same row is highlighted down below for Williamstown Elementary School. We are seeing additional need with respect to out-of-district tuition within those two student populations in particular. So we probably will be bringing forward some numbers that increase from FY24 to FY25. And sometimes those increases can be very material within the overall, the overall budget. So that is to be determined, I'll certainly bring back more information, both in early and then more refined in late February there. As we try to make sure we, we have the best sense possible of all of the potential student needs that we'll have as we look towards FY25. These are, these are rows that also always, and as you look at Williamstown Elementary School and you scroll down, we, we have the same health insurance highlight. But currently, we, we do not have any budget for FY24 out-of-district needs. We, we believe that we probably will be entering into situations where we do have needs. That might happen mid-year, those will be adjustments that we internally need to figure out how to manage and how to fund within the, the larger context of our FY24 budget. But we will almost certainly be bringing this forward in FY25 as something where we need to make sure we've got some placeholder there for the next school year. As we continue down, we get to some good-ish news. Within the benefits and fixed charges areas here, as we looked at, at various expenditures that are characterized as district-wide, the employer retirement contributions line is our contribution into Berkshire County Retirement System, which is the retirement system that serves all of our employees except for our teachers and some of our administrators. Our contributions over the last, if you were to look at the trends over the last four or five years, we've seen increases in the hundred to two hundred thousand dollars per year as we move through. So seeing an increase of only twelve thousand eight hundred and five dollars, and this is, this is a number that is now fixed. We, we received our FY25 bill just a couple of weeks ago. This definitely is a, is a good sigh of relief that we're not going to see another significant increase there. Although it is an increase and I think we're always going to see some increases as long as our payroll increases or if our FTEs increase, so that those are the two things that the actuarial figures end up bringing to bear that drive what we see, but we're not seeing nearly the percentage increases that we have in recent years. Same thing for district-wide though around needing to keep a close eye on what health insurance premiums will drive. And our other non-employee insurance, this is a line that is property liability type insurance. We have penciled in a ten percent increase here largely due to, not due to experience, not due to claims that we're putting in and premiums increasing as a result, but instead due to the fact that we, and many other places, have needed to go through revaluations of our property so that our insurance company knows what the replacement cost would be associated with our various buildings. And our buildings, and it sounds like, like pretty much every other building in the United States, they're seeing significantly increased costs associated with replacement projected. So the values of our buildings have gone up and therefore our insurance premiums associated with being able to repair, replace the buildings has or will also go up. So that's the placeholder that we have in now and I think we'll, we'll get a firm figure over the course of February so that we can, we can make that number much more exact. The last line, motor vehicles line, and this seventy thousand dollar number right now, it is, it is purely a placeholder. By the time we hit late February, we'll, we'll have something firm there. But the, the single van that we own within the school district that works hard on a daily basis to transport students is showing its age. It's, it's currently eleven years old, many miles, a lot of winters, a lot of salt. And we, we are looking to replace it as we move into fiscal year twenty-five. The cost of maintaining and, and replacing parts is now getting to the point where we really need to figure out a replacement for the vehicle in its entirety. And they are not inexpensive vehicles, they, they qualify under, and they are certified every year under many maintenance and, and inspection routines, they also have wheelchair lifts. And so, you know, thi- this is not your, your everyday, simple bare-bones fifteen-passenger van. It's, it's a much more significant expense. So currently, we have a number in there that, that feels very safe, but at the same time, lead times for vehicles and trying to figure out exactly how to go about this in the best way. It's going to take a little bit more time and, and so we've, we've got a number in there just so that we all know that it is something that we will definitely be doing. To what extent that number ends up holding for the budget is to be determined. So that was my whirlwind tour of things to date. I can open it up to questions, I can stop the screen share so that we can all see each other, but, or I can bring it back up if people need to point out a line in particular.
Um, Joe, one thing I want to say is sort of a note of appreciation for this spreadsheet. Having, this is my fifth year on the school committee. And when I started these presentations of budget, we're dizzying. I mean, I am an English major, so numbers are frightening. But this is so clean and so easy to read and I am so appreciative. I know it was not easy to get it to this point, so thank you.
It's been a labor of love. And, and, and it's taken a, a big team and a lot of, a lot of hair pulling. But I, I'm starting to feel very comfortable with how we can organize and present numbers, which feels good.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Even if the numbers contain within, it does not make me feel good.
Right.
Anybody have questions or comments at this time? You can kind of see why the discussions with the, I mean, I worry sometimes that the discussions with school councils can seem futile, but as long as we can at least try to address some of the needs that are being highlighted by that group effort with staff or resources that exist within the budget, that will have been something, but there's just not, there isn't going to be a lot of wiggle room this year from what we can tell.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right, thanks.
Okay, moving on to the business administrator report. Back to you, Joe.
All right, so the first item here, the Williamstown Elementary School solar lease and PPA approval, you, you have the, the final draft documents in your packet. Our council has reviewed and signed off on them. Select has reviewed and signed off on them. The Williamstown Select Board, they met on Monday. And, and I was hoping to, to, to gain their tacit approval in some way for us to enter into these arrangements. They were all very supportive verbally, but they want to wait and do their full authorization on the twenty-second when they meet, which is a week and a half from now. So what I'm coming before you tonight to request is that you vote to authorize signing the lease and PPA documents pending a vote of approval from the Williamstown Select Board. So that's what, that's what I'm here for, but I'm also here to answer any questions or to do anything else.
I'll move the approval of the lease pending approval of the Williamstown Select Board.
Let me carry moves, do I have a second, Curtis? Okay, any further discussion?
Has anything changed since we talked about this? Nothing.
Nothing except for typo corrections, honestly, that's, that's it. It's, it's, it is worth saying publicly also that, that ninety-nine percent of these documents are really state bid contract-type documents, so there isn't a lot of place to negotiate or to wiggle around in any way. That, that doesn't change the fact that we went through all the reviews and made sure we didn't, you know, we didn't just get a bad set, but yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Oh, and I.
Conri, I.
Constancy, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Okay, thank you, that motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. And, and I, and I do hope that with these approved in place, this was the final piece to be quote-unquote shovel-ready for state funding. So I'm, I'm hopeful that once the state comes into its first year of this program that we will be able to be first in line. And I'll certainly keep the committee updated a, as we go as to whether or not we're able to, to do this. And I'll also note that it's a little bit further down, but I'll, I'll mention it now. Lanesboro Elementary School is, is even farther along because we, we didn't have any, any need to commit to these documents quickly in order to try to get studies done. So I'll be bringing pretty much identical lease and PPA documents forward to you as soon as they're ready for Lanesboro Elementary School, so they will also be first in line. Um so we'll have both of our elementary schools um ready to go um with this program if it's at all possible. So uh great, great progress. I'm, I'm excited that perhaps a key capital component and cost um for our two elementary schools can, can be covered in a way that's, that's a huge net benefit as opposed to a, a difficult conversation around debt. So good news all around. Um thank you. And now um we have a series of uh, we, we've been working on in collaboration with our towns um draft capital plans. Um Williamstown has a, a debt study committee um that, that has been meeting regularly um and, and discussing uh how it wants to advocate for the town to utilize debt in um specifically to typically capital renewal type work. Um Lanesboro Elementary School, uh Lanesboro, Town of Lanesboro's Finance Committee is taking on a similar kind of look. Um sometimes in collaboration with the Debt Study uh Committee of Williamstown. Um and so we have been responsive in terms of trying to understand uh the collection of potential projects um that are coming up with, within the five-year horizon, um and then looking farther out in the ten years. Um we have the Playground and Outdoor Spaces Project, um which I'm hoping that by the early February meeting, I will come forward to you with a fairly final solution, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, but that's at Williamstown Elementary School. We also have a series of upgrades of, of in-building systems and components um that, that we're going to be bringing forward. So I'll take Williamstown Elementary School here first, and then I'll, and then I'll talk about Lanesboro. Williamstown Elementary School, first off, it has the benefit of the Williams College gift to Williamstown Elementary School that was initiated um when that, when that building was uh, was new. Um the intent of the gift is to contribute to capital renewal of the school. Um we are now at the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three year mark, depending upon what components you're talking about. Um within the school, and so we're, we're starting to see the wear or the expiration of various things, and we need to start to line up a five-year trajectory for things that need to get done. The playground has been uh first in line there largely due to its extraordinary use and the fact that we, that we have a, a, a good obligation to try to make both of those playgrounds on that site more accessible and, and to do that soon. Um we secured ARPA funding through the Town of Williamstown um last spring. Um we've been evaluating a number of ways to fund the remainder because the, the ARPA funding will, will not cover nearly the uh total cost of the project. Um and in conversations with the Town of Williamstown's Debt Study Group, um and I think last spring also with the Finance Committee early on. Um and the Select Board while we were gaining the ARPA funding, I think that all of those committees are unified in the perspective that we should utilize the Williams College gift before we talk about taking on debt, um which really gives us two other ways to utilize or to, to gain funding. One would be grant funding. Um we have not yet found any grant funding that would work for a playground out of public elementary school of our sort here. Um two would be raising money independently um from individuals or from businesses. Um we also know, we understand that there are many small groups in town, as well as many town initiatives right now that are out trying to do the same thing. The idea that we can go out and execute a, a fundraising campaign and raise three, four, five, six hundred thousand dollars to cover the gap between ARPA funding and total project cost. Um one, it's a very difficult time to try to do that, and two, there are a lot of groups that are, that are trying very hard um to raise fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to be able to execute projects that they've got, along with some much larger efforts um around community uh resources within town. Um so we're going to be bringing forward a plan to you in February that allows us to utilize the ARPA funding, which, which has a, has a deadline for use um and to utilize the Williams College gift to tie those two together to try to potentially do a little bit of smaller fundraising for some, some reach type goals. Um to complete the two playground projects or the, the, the renewal of the two playgrounds, one playground project uh this coming summer. Um so we're, we're going to bring forward a uh presentation for you in February with a vote um on the use of the Williams College gift for that purpose. And then the second sizable thing that we have coming for Williamstown Elementary School, um and we're also going to bring this forward to you in early, in early February is um over the last five or six years, um we've done gradual updates of Lanesboro Elementary Schools' um door access, security, fire, and camera systems. Um Williamstown Elementary School, one, it's a much larger building. Upgrading anything um costs uh significantly more on a, on a per-element basis. Um two, we've been largely preoccupied with our HVAC system upgrades that, that we've been doing that have been successful um and that are largely complete at this point. Um and three, we, we have a number of areas within those various systems um that are just coming up on, on uh having, having run their course over their lives and need to be addressed as soon as we can. Um and so we're going to be bringing forward a plan for you in uh during the February meeting with a vote again for the Williams College gift to be utilized for them. Um I'll also note that this is not an area of capital renewal that the MSBA has a great program for that will come up in a year or anything like that. Um really, we're, we're going to be on our own in some way to make sure these things happen. Um so we're going to bring forward a plan for you for a vote in February. Um that project will total between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars um in sum. So if we look at those collectively, um as of June thirtieth, the Williams College gift to Williamstown Elementary School had um right around two point one million dollars under management by the college. About two hundred thousand dollars of that was previously committed to our various HVAC projects that were that are right now kind of being finalized as we, as we move through this winter, finalized meaning final payments are going out. Um so if we think of that as a one point nine million dollar gift in terms of its value, um these projects collectively would bring us down to after we make commitments, if the committee is willing in February, um would bring us down just a little bit below the one million dollar mark. Um and so we're going to bring details to you, but I just wanted to start to have these discussions on that now so that then in February, it feels like we're all ready to potentially make some, make some sizable commitments. So do we want to talk about that first, then move on to Lanesboro Elementary, or would you all prefer for me to talk about Lanesboro Elementary's mirror-like work and then go back and talk about them collectively?
Whatever works for you, Joe.
Lanesboro Elementary School. Um we've been, uh well, one, I already touched on the roof and solar. Um we're far along there. We're excited to, to have that be, be right there um in terms of hopefully, hopefully one of the first projects in the state. That would be a significant win for Lanesboro Elementary School in um, in uh seeing a roof replacement. Um we will, over the next few years, in collaboration with the Lanesboro Finance Committee, um be working through other sizable projects, hopefully also bringing in the MSBA if the MSBA's windows open up around floors um and windows. Um we are going to be bringing forward into the FY twenty-five budget um work on the exterior doors, um replacement of some exterior doors that have had twenty years of wonderful very significant volume of opens and, and closes and, and that at this point are, are up for being the, the next project for Lanesboro Elementary School. Uh I imagine that's going to be somewhere in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range um as a commitment for FY twenty-five. Um so not, not off the charts large, but at the same time, it, it does move the needle on the budget overall. Um other areas I mentioned, we, we have been able to gradually do security and fire alarm and door access upgrades over the last five or six years. So those have already seen some of the comparable upgrades um to what we're talking about there for Williamstown Elementary School.
All right, who's winning?
All right, um so uh you know, tha- that you'll see within the FY twenty-five budget for Lanesboro Elementary School. So that m- my, my hope is that in early February, we'll get some Williams College gift um commitments for Williamstown Elementary School, and then in the March budget adoption for Lanesboro Elementary School, we'll have some um capital projects listed that will be contained within that um for updates there. And then we're all going to keep our fingers crossed that um the state's Green School Works program is fully funded and that our two elementary schools are able to be um in line there because it would give us new roofs and uh and about a ten cents per kilowatt hour cost savings on electricity that we do need to purchase um for each of those two schools. Questions?
Do we know what the roofs would cost if we had to replace them ourselves?
Yeah, but ballpark, um so far, we had only done an estimate for Williamstown Elementary School. Um and gi- given the way that we would be approaching it without any solar, we'd probably be looking at one point five million dollars or so. Um that's a number though that is pretty quickly varying far more than it used to. Um part of the impact there is uh we don't have a lot of commercial municipal oriented roofing companies in the area. Um and so wh- when that does go out to bid, uh it's, it's going to be a little bit more of an adventure in terms of getting folks in and, and interested in providing the best prices possible, so. We will see.
I have a follow-up on that question, but does anyone else have questions first? Yeah, okay. So worst-case scenario, the solar thing doesn't come to pass in Williamstown. When, I think you said we were still a few years away from needing to replace the roof, is that right?
Wha- wha- wh- when you say the solar thing doesn't come to, that, that's the Green School Works doesn't get funded?
Yes.
By the state?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I, I think we're, I, I think we're all for the solar. Sorry. Um uh yeah, but both roofs are um a- a- as far as uh warranties and expirations, they, they, they are both at the point where any roofing company would say you should consider getting ready to replace them. Um and that's a good thing within this state program because um you need to be there in order for the state to say that it's willing to fund it. Um at the same time, I don't want anybody thinking that we're, we, we aren't putting buckets underneath underneath sizable portions of our classrooms, and there, there is nothing like that. So we're, we're, we're in as good a shape as a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three-year-old type roof can be. Um but the roof would be the first major project for each of those two schools that, that we would need to see just because it is, it's a it's keeping the building sound.
So you probably know where I'm going with this. Like, can you foresee a scenario where, you know, we spend the money on the upgrades and the playground for Williamstown Elementary, but then have to replace the roof ourselves? I mean, is that something that could happen?
It's something that could happen. Um as the roofs get to the twenty-five-year mark, we do enter MSBA renewal program.
Hmm.
Doorways, so we're able to start to think about that. Um this Green School Works program, it, it, it doesn't have the same the same limitations. Hon- honestly, I, I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's part trying to renew municipal roofs, but another big part of it is trying to push the state's municipalities in a direction of more energy independence and, and renewable energy. Um so thi- this is just a program that would let us kind of get in the door earlier. Um and so we, we're trying to make sure that we're first in line.
Yep. No, I, I totally get it. I'm just thinking about use of the West Renewal Funds. That's it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. If there's no further.
I have another question. Does it make sense to invite the um town officials who approve the ARPA funding for the West Playground to the meeting portion where you talk about what the plans are?
I was assuming that we would go and visit them during their meetings, but we can certainly, I'll, 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 I'll reach out to Jeff Johnson and extend the invitation to that early February meeting to see.
Okay.
Um yeah, it's a great idea. Okay, so I'll close out this uh business administrative report on a high note. Um Keller's made wonderful progress on the uh new field and track location. Um if you go back to that part of campus right now, you can see the shape that the project will live within. You, you, you can see the dimensions of the track. You can see the change in elevation going up to the throwing sport, so you can really see all of that. They, they've done that, that first take on grading. Um I'll note that I believe where they are right now with their grade is about one foot below where the finish grade will be, because when they come back in the spring, and this is the, this is the realistic but kind of sad part. As of tomorrow, they're going to shut down the site um until weather allows it to reopen, which they're projecting to be in mid-March right now, but you know, the weather will determine that. Um but uh once they come back on site, so far, right now, they've, they've completed their, their initial grading, um and they've got a lot of the major exterior drainage components in place. Um once they come back, they'll be doing finish grading, um getting the, the track and the field drainage, so like the, the finer, smaller diameter drainage in place. Um and then they'll move towards uh late spring, um getting ready to start to paving. Um so that's, that's the project that we're looking at. So far, everything is either on or ahead of schedule. Um we're, we're looking good in, in every way we can, so um the project team met this morning and, and we kind of wrapped things up for the, for the winter on a high note, which is, which feels great.
Awesome, thank you. Any other questions for Joe? All right, moving on to the superintendent report, we hand it over to Jake and Candace.
Give Joe a little break here. I will share my screen. Everybody can see that. Uh and I will be joined in doing this presentation tonight, uh the, on our long-awaited district improvement plan uh by Joel Ruckner and Ellie Cott. Uh our Director of Curriculum and our Director of Instructional Technology, and certainly in putting this plan together, two of the, the, the most key players and thanks to our entire administrative team, including our principals for uh, for their input into what I think is a a, a fairly robust plan that covers a lot of ground and uh certainly doesn't represent all of our work. Um we always have, have multiple things that we're working on, multiple priorities that we are aspiring to, to make better. And then uh the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed certainly throws uh things our way that uh they expect us to be focused on. Our communities do the same, our students families do the same. Um but this really represents a, a primary, several, several areas of focus uh as we move forward into the next uh three school years. So this plan is uh based on data, it's based on information, and it's, and it's based on the voices of the people that we're here to serve. Um this plan really works to address um Forward movement in in ways that are meaningful to all of our students. These goals are built on a foundation of an honest look at ourselves and our data. Uh, on information that is big information, you know, from MCAS and statewide data. Down to information on individual students and individual families. That uh that we're really here to serve day in, day out. And this, these goals are based on the voices of our students and our staff and the families and the communities that we are here to. Work for, work with, and to serve. Uh, I think it is worth noting, this this is our our fourth district, our 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 fourth touch on on. Multi-year district improvement plans and our team, for the most part, is is. About halfway through our fourth full year of working together in new roles. So if you look at this district five years ago, um, really nobody. Uh, with the exception of Rob Winook, uh, and and was was in their current role. And uh some of us were not even here in the district, and so as we continue to work together. We continue to to gel more and more and we continue to do uh good things. We are sitting as we revisit this plan tonight or visit a new newly envisioned district improvement plan. We have good fair contracts in place with our with our union bargaining units. Uh, we have two full years ahead of us on on plans that recognized important things and recognized important people. And we are uh working on several individual contracts primarily with administrators as we speak. We continue in year four of this team being together to build stronger and stronger working relationships. With our member towns, I think you could hear that in in some of Joe's presentation. And some of you are are certainly deeply involved and see that firsthand. Uh, as we work with our select boards and our finance committees and our town administrators and our town police departments and our town. Um, inspecting units, et cetera. We're also continuing to build um better and stronger working relationships with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, we are going to play host, thank you to Joel. To a really top tier DUCY-led training by uh by really the leader of special ed. Um, at the DUCY level, Joel can speak a little bit more to that if she wishes during during part of her presentation as an add-on. But uh I've had several thank yous from our neighboring superintendents for uh for getting um. Uh, I believe Joel, it's Heather Camacho uh out here to lead this training, Jamie Camacho, thank you. Yeah, we're very honored that Jamie is coming out to really this this farthest corner uh of our state. Um, to present to us, Carrie, I don't know if you had a chance to see Jamie at uh at the MASC, MASSS conference, but. Um, that's really where Joel's wheels started rolling toward toward working to get her out here. And we are thrilled that uh she said yes, we found a date. And uh and so our our relationship with DUCY continues to blossom and grow and add power to the work that we're doing for our students. Uh, as does our partnership with neighboring school districts. Um, in including, uh, Joe and I have a meeting uh later on this week, or maybe next, it's actually later on next week. With uh some folks from the New York State Department of Education who are um very interested. Have heard through some some sources uh about the Mount Graylock Regional School District Regional Agreement. And so um, we got an email from out of the blue uh. In in late November, asking if uh if we could sit down with them and walk them through this. And then with several superintendents from the the Albany County BOCs. Um, so, you know, we're 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 building good relationships here, um, both in towns and out of towns. And I'm grateful to the folks on our team who make those relationships possible. Um, we value our place in the world, we we value our place in the community. We're very proud to be the public school that serves uh Lanesboro and that serves Williamstown. And it serves New Ashford and it serves Hancock. We're very honored by this opportunity to serve. Um, and in our administrative team, and I will put the school committee into that mix as well as a part of that team. Uh, we trust each other enough to be really transparent and and to be honest with one another. Which allows us and gives us the freedom and the flexibility to be really, really reflective. As individuals, as a team, and as people who are here to serve students in our community. And I think this plan reflects all of that. The domains that you're going to see tonight in in the uh district improvement plan, instruction and curriculum alignment. Student support and emotional wellness, technology, belonging equity, inclusion and diversity and district building. Um, and district building does not refer to a physical building, it refers to building just a stronger, more cohesive two-town district, multi-town. Um, and so with that, uh, I am going to hand over to Joel Brookner, our director of curriculum. And uh ask her to work on a few of these slides and then we'll be joined by Ellie. I will jump in and then I will provide a wrap up, so thank you, Joel.
Hey, sure, hello again. Um, okay, so the next few slides are focused on instruction and curriculum. The first, our first um. Action item here is to create a renewed focus on best practices in teaching all students. And really what that means for us is thinking about differentiation. Um, it's a commitment to making sure that we are using culturally and linguistically sustaining practices. So we're we're going to be, we're not talking about the calendar tonight, um, but some of the work we're doing right now. Is planning out professional development for next year and you'll see many of the slides, my slides, Ellie's slides, um, Jake's slides. Require time um and investment in time for our staff to be able to make sure that. We're doing the best work that we possibly can in service of our students, so um we'll be doing professional development. Um, we are expanding the use of our universal screening system to the middle school. This work is begun already, and I know that these are the slides, but you have the document with um projected timelines in your packet. So I'm not going to talk a lot about that. Um, but actually Ellie and I met with the seventh and eighth grade teams today today and we'll be starting. Some screening in math and ELA in January, two weeks. Um, we're going to use those results for a number of reasons, but in terms of our district improvement plan, we're looking. To have those results help inform the need for any potential changes to the middle school pro- um program of study. And should there be um additional courses in math or reading. We will be looking at best practices in intervention instruction and. We do a lot of intervention instruction in the elementary schools and it looks really different in the middle school. Um, and so we want to be looking at that very, very closely. There, DUCY, this is another place that DUCY is fabulous, there are really great resources available to us. For all of this work and um for RTI mult- uh multi-tier systems of support, so we'll be using those resources. And we are going to be continuing, expanding our PD uh around our multilingual learner students. And being su- uh making sure that teachers are feeling comfortable and knowledgeable and ready to um. Meet the needs of our MLL students as well. You can go to the next slide, Jake. Um, okay, so number two, we are planning for the implementation of the new comprehensive health and physical education frameworks. This is not that's uh more exciting, less exciting, but I'm personally excited about this. Um, we've been waiting for years for this update, um, the new frameworks were due. Right when COVID hit, and so they've been delayed for several years, they just came out. It's a, this is a lot of work, this slide, um, so we're going to create opportunities from pre-K through twelve for faculty to actually. Review and unpack the frameworks and see what's there. Um, we are going to, we need to review our district policies, so that'll be the work of the school committee to make sure. That our regulations, our notification, our opt-out regulations match mass general law. Um, there are no new, just so you know, there are no new opt-out. Regulations, none, none of the MGL has changed, but we just, it's, it would be great to make sure that we're in the right place with that. Um, there are some significant changes in these frameworks, and so some of the work will be to communicate the information to families and to you. So you can expect me or someone to come back in the spring to talk to you about the frameworks. Um, you can also Google them, so if you just look, and I encourage you to, there there, it's really, um, they're very exciting. We are, so I I sat in on a DUCY meeting uh right before the holidays. And they have a pretty robust plan through the spring and summer to offer a lot of free training for districts. And summer institutes, they have done a lot of curriculum review at the state level. That they're going to be giving to us, so it's already vetted curricula. Um, they are going to be providing us with grants to help us fund purchase of new curriculum as we as we need that. So that is, this is one of those, um, we get plenty of mandates that are unfunded. This is a place where the state is really saying, this is important work and we're going to make sure that you have what you need to implement this. Um, we are, so part of that will be reviewing the Mount Graylock Program of Study to make sure. That what's offered at the high school is in line with the new frameworks. Some work we really need to do is to assess the landscape of health education in the elementary schools. To make sure that we are not only covering frameworks, but also looking at whether we need to. Make some changes in the way that we do that, there may need be a need for um. Additional staffing at some point, I'm not anticipating that for this fall, um, but this is a three-year plan, so we you may, we may be back with that. Um, we are going to, we started this work at Williamstown Elementary, but we want to do it more holistically for both elementary schools. Update puberty units using the new frameworks. And we, through all of this, examining the budgetary impacts and, you know, staffing trade-offs that we've been talking, been hearing about. Relative to implementation of this particular goal. Okay, um, math, so we are in the third year of implementing a new ELA program. And it's definitely time to look at math, we've known that we wanted to look at math for a few years, but. Our leadership team believes very firmly that we're, to do it well, we can't ask. Too much of the teachers, we can't throw too many things at once, so it's time to start looking at math. We have already sent out, created a survey um to gather qualitative data and feedback from teachers regarding the current. Pre-K through six math instruction, and you may or may not know that math is the one area. That when we regionalized was the one area of alignment between Williamstown and Lanesboro Elementary School. So we both use the same math program and we have for the same amount of time. So we're looking at. How that's doing perceptions from teachers, does this program meet the needs of all of your learners, specific groups of learners? Um, we we. Have looked a lot at the data, so we have, we have some understanding going in and um. Have expectations for some of the information, what, we're kind of anticipating answers that we're going to get. Um, we are forming an elementary math committee. Um, I've been able to write this into our Title I grant for this year. So we will have an elementary math committee representative of both schools, um, both elementary schools. At some point, when later on in the process, we'll pull in some middle school uh folks to. Just so they're know, they're in the loop with what we're doing, um, we will be establishing a vision for what we want math. Instruction to look like in our district, there have been some changes, there's some, there are real changes in pedagogy since. We adopted everyday math years and years and years ago, so we're going to be establishing a vision. We're going to be reviewing potential new curricula using, again, DUCY resources, there are many vetted. Curricula out there, um, and planning professional development for our committee, but also for the rest of the school. Um, around best practices, even before we choose a new curriculum, because there needs to be some, we. Believe there will be some need for instructional shifts. And it would be great to start making those shifts before we even have a new curriculum. Part of what the teachers who agree to be on the committee will do is they are agreeing to. Be part of this work this year in the review process and then they're going to be field testers for whatever curriculum that we choose. So next year, our plan is to. I have pilot here, but we're calling it field testing now in the DUCY world, so to be field testing one or two new math curriculum in grades. K through six, we're not sure how many it will be, um, many of the pro- math programs out there are. K five and then six through eight, so it could very well be that we have a standalone sixth grade. Um. Program happening next year. And then our goal is that ongoing meetings through the field test phase. Make some decisions about choosing a new curriculum. Plan for that for the budget for the fall of twenty twenty five, including all the needed professional development. Um, calendar support to make sure that we have the time for that. And the people who were on the committee become kind of the the trainers as well, you know, built-in coaches. Not coaches as much, but just as instructional leaders within the district who've already had time with the programs. So I'm not expecting a big cost, I'm not really expecting cost for that, for this year at all. Um, for next year either, okay, and we also want to really, we've, we've had a strong focus on literacy and we want to keep that focus, it's very important. We, there are new regulations that went into effect over the summer regarding early literacy screening and uh dyslexia action planning. So the work for this piece of our goal is to engage in the planning process to make a formal district dys- dyslexia action plan. We applied for admission to the Massachusetts Dyslexia Institute and I found out right before the holidays that our team was admitted. So we will have both of our elementary principals, um, one of our reading specialists. Our special education director and I will be working in an intensive um DUCY-led. Um, graduate level coursework basically, and the outcome will be developing the Mount Graylock Regional School District Literacy Plan. That's great, um, it's part, it's a hybrid, it's a hybrid, um, course, we'll have two full days in person and then. Meeting throughout the rest of the spring, um, virtually. Uh, we will up be, make updates to our current district literacy plan as needed. We, what would like to, this has always been part of the plan, is to really put a specific eye on writing. To make sure that, not to make sure, to to create. A comprehensive approach to written expression in the district, which we don't currently have. And this is lots more professional development, that's the theme of my goal here is professional development. Oh, that's my last slide, so I don't know if anybody has questions for me on all of that. It's exciting, I mean, we're, we're, it's a lot, it's a lot, and I'm grateful to Jake that, you know, that this is a three-year plan. So it feels doable, there definitely will be budgetary implications for some of these pieces more than others. We will keep you in the loop at the earliest possible time, um, and we just, we always appreciate your support.
Joel, um, I have a question about the math curriculum, um, so we've been working with DUCY on the English. Curriculum and the history, not English, but language and social studies curricula.
Yes.
The elementary school level, right?
Yes.
And do they not offer a similar program with updating or or upgrading math programs? Or do they offer recommended um curricula that you'll be sampling?
They, yes, yes and no, so the social studies is different because the, that curriculum is actually created by folks in the department. And with their curriculum partners. But yes, there, they do have pre-vetted, there's a website called curate, C-U-R-A-T-E. Which is Massachusetts website, that's kind of like the ed reports for Massachusetts, where they, companies. Which is Massachusetts website. That's kind of like the ed reports for Massachusetts where they, companies. Submit their product for review. It is reviewed by teachers and experts in the field in Massachusetts. Relative to Massachusetts teaching principles and standards. So we will definitely be using that as a starting place. Um, we actually had somebody from the math department at DESI visit Wes last week. Um, and so there, there were, there are grants available. We will take every opportunity to participate. In anything that's offered to us. They have a really, really robust whole process for guiding. Districts through the, the, the process of adopting new curricula. Um, and then I've been, knowing this is coming, I've been in touch with, I'm part of the math leaders network for the state. And there's a lot of communication. So I, I have a really good grasp of what other people are using. We'll be in touch with districts when we. See that, um, when we get closer. We don't, we don't know where we're gonna end up.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. We're really, really fortunate to be educators in Massachusetts.
Thanks, Joel. Um, and thanks for that question, Carrie. Moving into goal domain two, which is student support and emotional wellness. Um, as, as you all are aware, we have used, uh, our Essar money primarily over the, the last couple of years. Our COVID money, I mean, uh, to really invest in, um, in therapeutic support for students. By way of adjustment counselors, social workers, uh, and curriculum that embeds. Social and emotional learning and self-care, mental self-care and emotional self-care. In both of our elementary schools and in Mount Greylock Regional School. Um, now we're zoning in to, to a couple of, of finer points around student support and emotional wellness. So our first goal in this domain is to plan for an increase. In therapeutic and therapeutic supervisory needs for students in all grade levels. Uh, our approach to this is to continue to zero in and really focus in on data that suggests. Very specific challenges down to individual student level. Uh, around suspensions in some cases, around behavioral outbursts in other cases. Um, certain things like that that indicate that what we're providing for our students is simply not enough. Uh, for them and, and perhaps not enough for their colleagues, students, uh, to be able to focus in on their own learning. Um, we are working to and will be working to build an appropriate supervisory model and an educational model. Uh, for inclusion that allows for 360 degrees of student safety. And what I mean by that 360-degree look is that not only does the student upon whom we're focusing need to be safe. Um, but the students that surround that student in inclusive settings. Uh, or in non, you know, less inclusive settings and the staff need to be safe as well. Um, but really working to focus on, on that's include as much as possible, that's include as, as much as is healthy. For the student, uh, and push them, but also be aware of the safety needs of everybody that's involved. Uh, we're going to need to model and examine budget requirements particularly related to, to people and training of those people and transportation. Or more restrictive within the school programming. Um. That better supports therapeutic and the trauma-informed needs of specific students. But allows those students to go to school in the town or in the towns where they live. Uh, you know, we, we, Joe mentioned during the budget overview, going through the lines that we have some, some. Finances that we're anticipating budgeting. For Williamstown Elementary School for out-of-district placements. Um, you know, in an ideal world. Where a family chooses to call home, uh, is, is where that student is educated. And, uh, we have been working to find ways and, and this is why it's really now a, a. Primary focus area, working to find ways that if we are spending this much money to have a student not in our school district. Could that money be better spent on an appropriate place, an appropriate level of staffing? An appropriate level of staff training to educate that child, um, with their peers, with kids they have grown up with. Uh, some of them from the time they were two or three. Uh, this will include a look at space needs in each building. Um, understanding that, that construction, new construction is not an option. But perhaps re-envisioning spaces that we use for other things is perhaps an option. Uh, and we are also going to include in the mix the potential for one elementary level program. That is housed in one of the two, uh, district elementary schools. Because our ability to replicate a full-scale program and identify space for that. Uh, just, and, and the ability to finance that quite simply just may not be there. So we are keeping an open mind about elementary programming that happens in one school or another school. Which is certainly one of the advantages of being a regional school district that we can do that. Uh, and then we really are going to dig in and take a look at budgetary needs related to space. Actually renovations, uh, and, and space upgrades dependent on the, the program grade level. And the, the, the severity of the need, um, the number of students, the number of staff and make sure that our spaces are appropriate. Uh, moving on to the second goal in that domain, um. This, this one, I, I, this one is, is, should be a focus area for us all the time and is. Uh, but, but we really need to, um. Put some, put some, uh, guardrails on our thinking and some, some blinders to either side of our eyes to keep us focused on this. Uh, reviewing curriculum-specific to tiered levels of support throughout our entire grade span of A through 12. To increase student learning and student achievement, particularly looking at levels and models of instructional support for students. With IEPs and students without IEPs and how we are addressing, uh. Sometimes on one pathway, but oftentimes on two different pathways, the needs of IEP. Um, mandated students and, and non-IEP holding students. Um, I think we need to better, we agree that we need to better address, um, very specific needs. And a couple of very specific areas where students have fallen behind grade level expectations. Um, moving over to sort of the, the pieces of this plan or some of the pieces of this plan. And thinking back to when we did an MCAS review, uh, earlier this school year. And talked about the fact that growth scores are lagging in certain areas and certain grade levels. Um, and that, that we're closer to the state average rather than further above the state average in other areas. So we will be examining specific achievement and MCAS scores, uh, including growth scores. Um, for students to determine where current levels of programming and support are working. And in some cases where they are not. And looking at that as granularly as some. As individual student level, particularly students on IEPs. And the, and the models of instruction we're using to approach trying to get them closer to grade level. Uh, but also students that are not on IEPs and, and really trying to delineate. And keep an open mind to change what's not working. Um, this examination will kind of have two lenses, uh. One lens is, is the curriculum right? You've heard Joel already talk about that a little bit in a couple of our previous goals. Um, but our instructional model also has to enmesh. We have to have the right curriculum and we have to be teaching it in the right way. We have to be able to differentiate instruction. Uh, and, and we need to, to, to just be, um. Having the curriculum and the instruction enmesh and work together and have those gears pulling in the same direction. The data focus will be on the gaps between report card grades and MCAS achievement level and growth scores in some areas. Um, you know, again, thinking back to the conversation we had in October about MCAS scores and growth scores. Um, there were, there were just some areas of, of widespread disagreement between the grades that students are getting. And the grades that students have historically got and what their MCAS data is indicating. And particularly for some students, what their growth scores are indicating. And so that's a lens we will be looking through. Um, we will be examining best practices, making use, again, I'm echoing some of Joel's words. Of Mass DESI resources and Mass DESI personnel. Um, when I said in one of the opening slides that we are building a better, stronger. Relationship with our DESI colleagues, this is where those relationships really come home. You know, DESI is moving their offices from Malden, Mass to Everett, Mass, getting even a little further away from us geographically. But, um, the number of close professional relationships we have developed over the four years. Um, with everybody from, from the COVID experts at DESI to the instructional experts at DESI. And the curriculum experts at DESI, this is where this relationship building really pays off for our students. Um, and then we do have the tiered focus monitoring review visit upcoming. That visit was slated, the, the two-day in-person visit was slated to happen in March of 2024. Um, we have for various reasons agreed with DESI that that will be better placed in mid-May. Uh, and that will also provide us data about several areas of our work. Um, that certainly ties into su- student support and emotional wellness. Uh, but also several other areas, crucial areas of our work, including our special ed. Uh, and then finally, an examination of budgetary impacts. And as I said earlier, budgetary trade-offs, you know, we are expending money on students for out-of-district placement. Trying to find a way to perhaps leverage that money for more local use. Um, and cut out the transportation costs altogether, which may allow us to. Um, put more money in, into programming personnel or space that we could better serve students. Um, and their needs in the communities where they live. Um, and, and one of the challenges that's addressed in this, this sort of last phrase of that last bullet. Is, um, it's, it's all well and good to create a space for very specific nuanced programming to happen. It's all well and good to have the, the materials and the fixtures and the furnitures and the stuff that we need to run those programs. It is a real challenge in the Berkshires and I think we're joined by every other region in the Commonwealth. And I assume our neighbors in New England and in, in New York State. Um, the, the real challenge is finding personnel that have the right experience, the right license, the right attitude. And are, and are going to come in and serve our students, not only with expertise, but with, uh, high expectations. And the compassion that we demand of, of, uh, all of our personnel. Um, with that piece, we are now, oh, go ahead, Julia, please jump in.
Thank you. Um, so this is all incredibly complex. And I understand, like, there are so many different moving parts. Um, as somebody who works in this field also. Um, I'm not fully clear on what outcomes we're gonna be looking for to see if meeting this goal. And if, I feel like if I'm not clear, there might be others on the committee who aren't clear and certainly people in the public. Um, and so I wonder if, like, specifically naming an outcome, like. You meant, you talked about shifts in, you know, this, some of this is coming out of our conversation about the MCAS scores.
Uh huh.
If there were a very, like, some, either some specific metrics. That will demonstrate this goal as being met, that will help me, okay, this is really what this is about.
Yeah.
Understand that. Or, um, even if it's. You know, kind of zero, I, I mean, I've been having, I've been having this thought with other goals as well. Um, but even if it's like, these are how these goals map. To the, this student data, you know, whether that's attendance data or assessment data. Uh, or discipline data or whatever, um, I, it would really help me understand. Cause, cause you, you all understand the complexity of, of this work in a way that is far beyond. You know, most people's understanding. So I'm just wondering how to, like, make it tighter for most of us to understand.
Can, can I just ask a question about Julia's question? Um, which is. I wonder if what you're looking for is what, what would be found in the superintendent's goals. And in the goals of each of the, um, department heads, right? Because the district improvement plan is meant to inform the goals of the leadership. And all the leadership teams. I, so maybe you're right, maybe there need to be goals embedded in the plan itself. But I wasn't, I wasn't looking for goals.
So I'm, I, but it, so funny, I was gonna ask later how this all connects to the. It, what, and where we are in our evaluation cycle for the superintendent, cause I recognize it's, you know, not always how I'm thinking about it. But I, I, I. Ultimately, I don't know how, um. A group of people, when, when there's this much complexity in the language, I don't know how a group can see it all. And understand it at the, you know, in the same way to have that conversation of, are we doing this? Are we meeting this?
And Julia, I, I would say, you know, just to give a couple of, I think, quite concrete examples. Um, you know, related to, to this goal in particular, we, we would be looking at the disparity between. Uh, non-special education growth scores and students on IEPs and their growth scores. Um, and, and just straight up MCAS performance and, and first time passing versus. Uh, second, third, fourth time passing. Uh, you, you mentioned attendance. Um, one of the areas that the state is, is increasingly about to get very focused on is. Chronic absenteeism. And, um, that is one of the areas that, um, again, li- like many districts. But, but I find it particularly striking here. We have some real disparity in terms of. Our, our percentage of low-income students that are chronically absentee. And what their academic performance looks like, both MCAS scoring, MCAS growth. Uh, and, and in fact, their grades. And we have a, a just as striking disparity between. Um, what the state calls quote-unquote, students with disabilities. Versus students who do not have disabilities. Um, those are, those are the kind of outcomes that we're looking to. You know, it's, it's super cliche to say, but those are the gaps we're looking to see shrink. Uh, as a result of a goal like this.
That is super helpful. And I'm wondering even if in the table that you had sent with the columns, if there could be a column that says. Data to be looked, you know, something about the data.
Yeah, how do you know? Yeah.
How do you know? Exactly. How do you know?
Yep, understood.
That, and that also, I think, just knowing that helps me better understand what the complexity of this slide says. So, thank you.
And, and I do, I do appreciate Carrie's point, as I often do, that, that when I bring back my goals. Uh, next month that are tied to this, that, that feedback, Julia, helps me understand maybe where to go with. With some of my goals and where to go as we set our, our, our goals internally as an admin team.
Um. And I, I, I actually also, I appreciate that, but I think of it kind of as the reverse of what Carrie described.
Huh.
There's, how, the district wants to get these goals as measured with these metrics. Therefore, that means Jake needs to do this and Joel needs to do this and Ellie needs, you know, so.
Gotcha.
Like, I think of it backwards rather than.
No, I think that's what I meant.
Okay.
That all the goals should feed from this.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Thank you for that, uh, conversation. Are we ready to move on to, to technology piece? Which are, although technology doesn't sound like it should be, is a pretty deep and complex as well. So Ellie, thank you for jumping in.
I'm excited to jump in. Um, so as far as technology, we. At the last meeting, I discussed that we are participating in the Mass DESI, a tech equity learning cohort. Um, and it, through that process, we are, we have looked and. We have looked and inventoried. The softwares that we know we are using. And. There are so many, so many, so many tools used from K through twelve. And in thinking about. Ed tech in schools, we really need to be evaluating the tools that we're using. To cover many different um, layers as far as their purpose. Um, reviewing bias, reviewing accessibility, reviewing compatibility. With devices and accounts. Reviewing the cost. Student data privacy. And ads and student end marketing that are geared toward children. So. Part of that is working with the elementary school tech team, the high school tech team. And working through monthly workshops that are facilitated by the Learning Accelerator with Desi. Um, we will be developing our own evaluation tool that. Captures all of those topics. And applying that with three softwares to gather initial feedback. And then with those three softwares, uploading our privacy agreements to the Student Data Privacy Alliance. So that way, those privacy agreements are publicly accessible. We will then about, expand out the evaluation of that tool to the rest of the tools. It will be. Of course, a phased implementation, because we are using. A lot more than three software tools within the district. Um, that feedback will include responses from all the stakeholders that use whatever software we will be looking at. And that feedback loop will be continually assessed, so that way we can make adjustments as needed. Because one software program that we're using right, right now, may not be applicable a year or two from now. You can keep going, Jake. We, our Director of Operations. And um, will be enhancing our computer and network security to respond to evolving cybersecurity needs. Rob Winok is amazing and makes sure all of this is taken care of. Some of our key points is switching from traditional antivirus software to endpoint detection. Increasing cyber security awareness for all staff through trainings and tabletop exercises. And then rolling out multi-factor authentication for users across all domains. We have done a small switch to multi-factor authentication for our Google accounts. But we have other standalone accounts, and so we're looking. To implement a solution that will cover all the accounts that um, protect student data. We um, are in the very beginning phases of developing comprehensive guidance for AI. And then communicating it out to all stakeholders, which includes students, parents, faculty and staff. There are so many resources available from AI experts and educators. Um, that right now, we're just reviewing resources and getting a lot of information. We will then be working collaboratively with staff, school councils, our principals and the administration. To review draft guidelines for the district. Um, that will, of course. There, that will be an iterative process, because the landscape of AI is changing um, every day. And there are so many new tools being used and implemented in different ways. So ensuring that we can get feedback. Develop some sort of communication plan to share an AI guidance document to all stakeholders. And then schedule training sessions. So our teachers um, not only know how to use AI and how it works. But can also teach students, so that way they're prepared for AI as they leave Mount Greylock. Because the reality is. It exists in the world, students are going to encounter artificial intelligence. In their. Future endeavors, and we need to prepare them to use that technology in a responsible way. So continuing that support over the school years. Um, this goal will evolve, it will definitely change, it has changed since we were first thinking about it. And so um, the outcome of. AI may absolutely change, but right now, we know we need guidance, we need to jump in, and we need to teach responsible use. Um, one of, I'm so excited about digital wellness. Because um, technology evolves all the time and. We don't know what we don't know as parents, as educators. And so developing a committee comprising of school counselors, psychologists. And tech specialists to design a long-term digital wellness program. Would that can include yearly workshops, bringing in a speaker, having a screening, having classroom lessons at all grade levels. So that way we can focus on digital wellness practices. Feedback from those workshops will be critical, community attendance. And feedback at those will also be informative as to how we continue to evolve in that plan. Again, the outcomes for this are to address digital wellness, starting with social media. Then going into cybersecurity, cyberbullying, and then looking at how racism, belonging and isolation um, can. Very, very, very clearly exist in the technology landscape. Um, so that, all those outcomes might change a little bit, but adjusting and refining. Um, the program based on feedback and emerging trends in digital health research. Um, is going to be a core principle moving forward.
Thanks, Ellie. Any? Any questions? Um. Thank you, Ellie, really appreciate that.
I would like to put a plug in. Um, if I may, as far as digital wellness.
Please do.
On Tuesday, let's see, look at my calendar, on Tuesday, February sixth. There is an evening presentation for the community, Max Stossel is coming to talk about social media. Um, I. I can't get into all of the details about what he will be talking about, because he wants to present the topic himself. Um, but Max is an amazing community engagement speaker, and is going to be kind of our kickstart. Um, on the digital wellness topic, and Liza Barrett wrote the C grant to bring him in, so thanks to Liza.
Thanks, Ellie. Um, moving into goal domain four, and I, and I think you've heard um, belonging.
Julia, I can't see your hand, but Julia has a question before you.
How does one measure digital wellness?
That is a tricky question, um, because. Again, we don't know sometimes what we don't know. And speaking as um, somebody who's really into the trenches of. Trying to be mindful with engaging the technology in my own personal habits. And my own professional habits, and also being a mom of. A kiddo who has access to more technology than I would personally like. Um, and yes, I have control over that, but it, it's a real reality of not knowing all the things that exist. I think what we. I think a great starting point is, we have some baseline data from Mount Greylock students about kind of cell phone policies. And getting their feedback about what. The presentations have taught them, and I, I have a hunch, there are going to be some very clear behavioral shifts. That we see within the school building after we have these conversations. So I think there'll be some observational and subjective um, measurements. I'm going to look at the um. Referrals that happen at the high school as far as technology. Um, looking at the flags that we get from our security. Systems, because we get flags for what students are searching. And looking at that data, the outcome would be that those searches go down. And that students are problem solving on their own, rather than getting into conflict with devices. So I'm, I think we have some very clear ways to assess that as the years go on.
Super helpful. That goes in that column. That's super helpful. Thank you.
We need some, we need some mathematics majors working on this, then we drive Julia less crazy with uh. With the, with uh, my, my literature degree approach to all of this. Um, I, I hope that you've been hearing themes of belonging and equity and inclusion and, and. Diversity really all evening, starting with Joel's presentation around our multilingual learners. And certainly woven with thick threads. Uh, through several of the goals that we've looked at in our district improvement plan. Uh, I, I think in, in the case of these two goals we're looking at tonight, it's, it's. We, we will, of course, continue to do PD virtually every opportunity there is to do PD. Around very, very specific, um, clear. Uh, need to get better as individuals, to get better as. As individual professionals and as corporately as schools and as a district. Um, but I think one thing that, that, that we have been thinking we want to pay attention to. Assuming that we are operating in a, a, a world that is deeply impacted by institutional racism. In, in ways that we see and in ways that some of us have the luxury of, of. Not necessarily seeing just as we navigate everyday life, but have to, to develop the sense to see. Um, I think we wanted to go back and revisit uh. Looking at having much more formal and practiced and widespread means of checking for bias. In our curriculum. Uh, and, and when I say formal and informal, so there's the formal, we're going to be adopting a, a new math program at some point. Um, this is a key portion of what we're looking for in the math programming that we adopt. It's a key portion of what we look at in software that is going to go um, or web-based applications that are going to go. In front of students for student use or in front of teachers for teacher use, to make sure that they are representative, to make sure they are not. Uh, stereotyping and to make sure that, that um. That, that they are as free from bias as they can be unless it's using examples of bias. Very specifically and concretely as a teaching tool. But um, we, we have reason to think, and we know that we're right, that we really need to get. Much wider responsibility. For looking through both our formal curricular resources and then the things that are available to students through classroom libraries, through the school libraries. Uh, and through other ways that students interact with the learning stuff that's all around them. Um, so we will be engaging with Desi for technical assistance and support. Um, this is something that's actually part of the, the tiered focus monitoring review. And uh, they are there and stand ready to help us. We will promote both standing committees and as needed committees uh, in each school. To look at adopted curriculum, current curriculum. Classroom libraries, school media centers and other sources of the materials that our students are exposed to and that are available for students. Uh, and we will use resources both locally, um, some of the families that we serve have been our most valuable resources. For, for helping to understand what is working and what is not working and why. And then, and then helping us take the further step of what can we do about it. Um, but we also have collected a, a decent library of, of some of what other states and other organizations do. To help promote um. More bias-free school materials. We also think a, a side benefit of this, and again, how measurable it is, I would really struggle to give an answer to uh, here on the spot. But um, by doing the PD and the training and the conversations that are going to go, go along with the school-based groups that are doing this work. Is some pretty deep discussion. Around the entire notion of belonging and equity and inclusion and diversity. It's, it's um. This is a. End in and of itself, but it's also one of multiple means to, to, to an end. Uh, and I think this kind of work, um, where we're asking our teachers and our professional educators. To dive in and, and look for bias and identify bias. Um, can be a very, very powerful learning opportunity for um, some folks. And an opportunity for people that are already very expert at this. To, to share their knowledge with colleagues. Um, the second goal in this uh, in this work, and, and again, we, we, we mentioned this uh, a few minutes ago. This, this one is a very specific, very measurable uh, goal. Work to reduce chronic absenteeism gaps among student demographics. Really, the key to me for this is, is identifying root causes of um, chronic absenteeism. Uh, it's all well and good to say, this is a student thing, this is a family thing. There are so many reasons why students um, A, don't come to school, or B, actively avoid school. Often among those reasons is um, or can be certainly in our context here locally and in Massachusetts and in America. Is uh, the stress or the, the worry or the trauma that is caused by um, racism or sexism or. Or multiple types of uh, of bias and, and microaggressions um, that play out. So a- again, one of the beauties of being in a district, the size of the district that we are. And um, in schools, the size of our schools. Is that we can, we can look at like this aggregated data. That says our low income students miss school chronically at a much greater rate, not quite twice the rate. As their um. Uh, better resource counterparts, but, but probably about forty percent. At, at a rate that's forty percent greater than their better resource counterparts. Um, we can look at this and say that our um, our. African-American students, our multilingual learners. Are chronically absent at greater rates than their um. Non-multilingual learner counterparts, than their white counterparts. Uh, you know, our, our white students and our Latino students have a very low. Uh, chronic absentee rate, at least what the state considers to be very low. Um, but there is a wide disparity between other groups, and, and so we want to look at it from a group level. But we also have the luxury of being able to really dig in and look at it from an individual student level. Because one thing we know for sure, a student that's chronically absentee, and for anybody that's, that's watching this that may not understand what that. And you understand the gist of that, but um, that means a student is missing ten percent or more of the days which they could be at school. So we have a hundred and eighty days, a student is missing eighteen days, they are now chronically uh, absentee. And, and think about the jobs where you work, think about a lot of things. What would happen to you if you miss ten percent of the time? Or, or fifteen percent or twenty percent um, that you are not there, and, and what we know for absolute certain. Uh, is that students are not learning on days that they are not in school. At least they're not learning what the state is holding them accountable for via the MCAS or graduation requirements. Um, and, and we certainly, when we look at the gaps that exist among our student groups. And look at that and, and we could consider or hypothesize that um, some of that is, is due to. Not having a strong sense of belonging for various reasons and not feeling that need. To be in school every time the school's doors are open and ready to welcome you. And that our schools are not as welcome. For, for all students as they are for uh, for some students. Um, so we will be working with uh, again, state-led groups. I don't think those exist yet, but I get the feeling that Commissioner Riley, that is going to be one of the things that's going to be coming along for us to take advantage of. As we so often do when the state gives us opportunities. We will be working with neighboring districts. And um, and we will be looking at um, some of our own practices uh, like. Out of school suspension, for instance, as, as maybe one of the um. Factors that lead students to be chronically absentee or to feel as though they don't belong. Um, and so as we're looking at our own practices, in our communication procedures. And the way we do other types of business outside of merely taking attendance. Um, we know that, that, that we have um, accountability for this as well. So um, this one, it, at first, when, when started thinking this through, saw this as maybe a stretch for, for DEI and B. But uh, I think really DEI and B is actually at the heart of this, and, and um. But, uh, I think really DEI and B is actually at the heart of this and, and, um. That comes from, from a couple of decades of experiencing this as, as a superintendent and, and three decades of experiencing it as a. As a teacher or, or other level of administrator. Um, moving into domain five, uh, looking at, at building a stronger and a more cohesive district. Uh, we want to create more and more frequent opportunities for students, families and staff to work together. To build district cohesion and strength. Particularly as students are approaching that gigantic transition of transitioning from, uh, Williamstown Elementary and Lanesboro Elementary into Mount Greylock. Um, I think part and parcel with this goal, although it's not stated in the goal. Is we, we really want to take a close look at how can we build. I don't even know quite how to say this and, and as we get deeper into the day, I'm not quite sure how to say lots of things, but. Again, my years of experience, even my experience as a parent who had three kids who went through a standalone middle school. You know, our, our children are in middle school for two years, they basically have three hundred and sixty days of middle school. Um, I, I, I sense students by and large at Mount Greylock. Have a really strong sense of identity. Of what Mount Greylock's nine through twelve. Role in the world is. I get the same sense of our K through six students at both of our elementary schools. I think middle school because it's two years or it's three years in most districts. Um, can sometimes feel like, okay. This is two years that I need to slog through until I can get to high school and really start, you know, living. As a teenager. Um, so, so I think we want to build stronger cohesion as our students before they even hit the front door and come together from our two towns. And I think we also need to look into how to build just a stronger sense of identity. For our middle school portion of Greylock Regional School. So we'll work, be working collaboratively and cooperatively with our school councils, with our principals and our school staff and our families. Identify natural areas for increased cross-school student interaction at the elementary levels. Be working with that same group of people. Uh, but focusing in on the folks that are paid by the school district. For cross-school collegial work and opportunities to do PD and opportunities for folks to take on powerful and necessary projects. Like what you saw with our, um, school library teachers coming together. In such a timely way to build the library material selection and review policy or rebuild that policy. And then really a close examination of student opportunities related to, um. Academic curriculum, defined and performing arts curriculum. And I would even say outside of the curriculum, um, just some social opportunities. To, to bring our students together across our two towns. Um, and, and help our students and families better understand that there's real opportunity. Not just starting in grade nine, but starting in grade seven. And that, that grade seven and grade eight can be really powerful years. Not only for individual students as they learn and as they mature. But for the corporate group of seventh and eighth graders to really come together and build a strong sense of unity, a strong sense of community. That they can then carry with them through, uh, nine through twelve and beyond. So, uh. Goal five point two, under the, the domain of district building. Is to, um, streamline school and district website communication to have similar organizational structure and ease of access to all. Ellie, do you want to jump in on this one?
Sure.
Thank you.
We. Identified this as, uh, an area of growth this past spring. When we looked at our websites and realized, oh, they're really hard to navigate when you go from between school and all three schools. So one of our goals is to review the site maps at all three schools. Including the district website and make adjustments to those site maps as needed, so they're more, they are closer aligned. Once, um, as we do that, we will be reviewing our final site, which is our website host analytics to review the content engagement. So we can see what our stakeholders are actually looking at that exists on the website and then building out that content further. In addition to that, we have launched Parent Square, which. I was really excited, the other night I looked at some analytics to see if any families. Are taking advantage of the translation component and they are, so I'm really excited to see. That our families who may speak a language other than English are using, um, that platform to access content. And in doing that, we are doing periodic review of Parent Square posts. And what's really nice about Parent Square is parents. And guardians and families do not necessarily have to engage with the content. For us to measure engagement. When we send out a post or we send out a message. We received analytics to see if it was clicked, if it was opened, if it was delivered. And sometimes our families who we may not hear from as much. Um, we're wondering if they're getting the message and we can see, yes, they clicked it, they opened it. Um, whether that's through their email, whether that's through a text message or whether that's through the native app. Um, and that has been really, really nice for teachers to see. Uh, parents are engaging more, um, than they would expect them to. So we are continuing training on best practices and different features of Parent Square, uh, over the years. Um, that has been really nice to give faculty bite-sized pieces of information. That give them ideas on how to engage families even further. Um, and then I've said it so many times, but there's so many ways to review the analytics. And teaching our staff and faculty how to do that has been really, really helpful.
Thank you, Ellie. And then, uh, you know, we, we are on the cusp of, of needing to, uh. To develop, um, a new three-year Student Opportunity Act plan. Joel, do you want to jump back in on this one?
Sure thing, I was gonna say that because we are educators and we love our plans, this SOA plan is our plan within the plan. And, um, the, there, there's a lot of overlap between a district improvement plan and an SOA plan, but the major difference is that a district improvement plan. Aims to outline the initiatives that will impact all students. Where the Student Opportunity Act Plan is meant. For us to identify disparities and learning outcomes and experiences for specific groups. And then focusing on evidence-based programs and strategies that will improve those experiences for those specific groups. Including English learners, students with disabilities and low-income students. So we anticipate that there will be much, much overlap between. Five point three here in this goal with much of what you have heard. Our task with this is quite scripted, um, we will analyze district data. And we will choose the student groups that we want to focus on with this three-year plan. We will using, so Desi will give us, um. Some target. Target improvement goals, um, for our lowest achieving students. And, but we will use those and then we can. Make our own targets, so we'll set three-year targets for improving student achievement from those groups of students. We will engage with families and caregivers around these plans all along. And then select evidence-based pro, um, programs and actions to address the disparities and outcomes. Something that you will probably appreciate is that we have to do an annual update for the SOA plan and so. Each year, we will, we have to identify a streamlined measure to show our progress in improving those outcomes and experiences. And we will report on that annually, so you will next year, this, this plan will be due, um, April first, I believe. And then next spring, you will get a report on how we're doing, I'm sure we'll, we'll present the plan to you too. Um, but then you'll annually, you'll get an update specifically with. How we are reaching the goals that we set for this SOA plan.
Thanks, Joel. Um, thank you all, I know that was lengthy and I know that was, that was. In some ways a ton of information to take in and in some ways probably not nearly enough information, um. On, on some of these things, but we, we appreciate you hanging in with that and I'm very grateful to our admin team for, uh. For making this a really, really collaborative, um, effort and helping get down from. You know, like fifty things down to, uh, you know, they just ran a range of things across. Everything that we do on a daily basis to get down to, um. To something that is in some ways aspirational, but, but really, I, I think it's much closer to addressing the heart of what, what are really. The things that really matter for us, uh, in this school district as we work to really make sure all students and families know they belong here and that we're serving each child. In, in the same rich way that, that gives every child real opportunity to, to excel here. So, thank you.
Julia, you look like you wanna, oh, I see Jose's hand.
I'm, I'm happy to wait for you to, if, if Julie wants to. Um, my, my question is just a brief one and, um, you know, Jake, you, you hinted at this earlier when we were listening to the. Sort of school council reports on potential budgetary requests or budget requests. And we think we all know what's happening and the common law regarding our, our state budget. Uh, and I, and I really, and I want to start off, and you, you, there's a theme here, you'll, you'll know. How grateful we are for you and your team lead, to lead our district and, um. Yeah, I, I, I feel really fortunate. Uh, and I know many parents in our district feel the same. The question I have in looking at the district goals, um, the big worry, of course, is our ability to, to kind of meet or satisfy these goals. And we've heard from Julia, I think, um. About the need to, you know, measure success or, or somehow hold ourselves accountable towards, you know, our, uh. Endeavors to, you know, accomplish these goals, but I, I am worried about. The impacts of, um, this budget climate that we're entering and the only area that, um. That it popped up as a word was, I think, under the student support and emotional wellness goal and, and I just was hoping you could maybe. Um, expand a little bit more on what you see as being potential budgetary needs related to space. And space needs and upgrades, I think is how the phrasing was put together. Um, and I think there's another phrasing, uh, that there was a need to examine budgetary impacts and trade-offs related to both. Curricular and instructional lenses and you'll, you'll know immediately what I'm saying, but. It's a, you know, it sounds like a thing that I'm just picking at, the general question is, are you worried about our ability to, you know? Make progress on these goals given. What we might likely be facing regarding, you know, regarding, regarding our district budget.
I totally, I totally get it and I, and I, as always, um, with, with all of you, I completely, um. Appreciate the, the question and I'll, I'll start by answering sort of. One of the, you know, the. The, the piece around the, the juggling act that. Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm going through a list of metaphors and each one poorer than the last. I'm gonna, I'm gonna settle on this one. The brick wall we have been banging our collective heads against, uh, for the last two years particularly that, that we've been. Sort of back in school, um, without, without Covid's, um, shadow. You know, keeping, keeping people away from each other, uh, has been that. We have students in out-of-district placements. And those out-of-district placements at a minimum are, are sixty thousand dollars. And when we, when we add transportation to that, um. To that equation, you know, we're, we're up really in the ballpark of a hundred thousand dollars to serve a student. And there's, there's certainly not a soul in our school district that. That begrudges a single penny of that hundred thousand dollar minimum to serve a student, that's not the point at all. But the point is, okay, if, if we're, if we're writing checks to somebody else for a hundred thousand dollars. What could we do with that same hundred thousand dollars to serve that student? Where generally their families would much rather have them serve. Which is in Williamstown or Lanesboro at one of our three schools. And, and I have. It really, there, there's like the big picture thinking about this, but then there's each student saying, okay. Uh, we can't for a hundred thousand dollars generate the level of expertise. That an out-of-district placement can, so it's not really a feasible thing, with some students, it's just not a feasible thing. Um, we, we do not have the critical mass to. To, you know, we, we, we might need to hire five people. At seventy or eighty or ninety thousand dollars each. To bring the expertise to bear for that student. And, and so that, that in terms of, of finances just doesn't make sense. And we would kind of be shortchanging that student by, by. Bringing them back to our school with a program that's not truly designed to, to meet their needs. But, but, you know, as, as I mentioned, that brick wall we bang our heads up against, so that's one piece of it is how do we generate the expertise? And can we even generate the expertise? But before we even get to that level, um, really in all three of our schools, we have been up against, we simply don't have. The space, period. Or the appropriate space. To serve students in a way that allows them to be integrated within the rest of the school where appropriate. But also gives them the space and the privacy to have their own space for their own program. We, for, for instance, and I may ask Joe to jump in here, we, we looked at a space that is, um. Really kind of a, kind of a sizable but unused space that's adjacent to the gymnasium at Mount Greylock Regional School. Um, for very good reason, that space has some, some nuances to it because of what it was, what it really serves to do. That it would be a great space in some ways for some very specialized programming, uh, it's big. It's, it's part of the school, but it's also set apart that allows for everybody involved in the, you know, students involved in the program to keep their dignity and to have a space that's theirs. But I, I don't know, Joe, we, we were looking at, at. I think hundreds of thousands of dollars to get that space. To be okayed, to be occupied, period, let alone the, 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 for the very specialized reasons. That we wanted to occupy. Is that number correct, Joe?
All, all, all of that is true and, and so we started looking at what would it mean to trade off, to, to trade other spaces within the building to start to view them as. Chess pieces where the programmatic use change would not be as significant. Um, and it, and it, those types of changes are feasible, they don't trigger quite as much of a cost. Um, that's true at Mount Greylock. Um, Williamstown Elementary School does not have a single room right now that is not being utilized. Um, that said, there are things that we've considered around changing use of spaces and starting to trade around. For different sizes and, and different uses that might come into play. Lanesboro Elementary School might have a little bit more space than, than Williamstown Elementary that is currently not utilized. But in order to adequately create the environment around that space for it to be used in ways that might fall under this goal. We would probably need to invest funds into. Changing the way those, that space looks and feels, so those are all areas where. It is bringing money that we are currently sending out of district back into the district. Um, that said, that, you know, that, that there is potentially an investment there of, of some sort that would need to be viewed as a multi-year commitment. Um, in order for it then to, to make sense as a, as a, as a thing to do.
And I, and I think, you know, so Jose, that's one piece and that's really talking about the, the, the. The programmatic trade-offs, the expertise trade-offs and then the financial trade-offs. In, in the, in the bigger picture, as you expressed your, your question. Um, that, there are pieces of this plan that are budget dependent. But there's, there's actually a lot of this plan that is not particularly budget dependent in. It, it's maybe budget dependent, but it's not in substantive ways, it's ways that we can figure out even within the confines of, of a tight budget year. Um, that's one of those areas where, where building. you know, starting that process of building strategic partnerships with DESI, who have access to some of the best professional developers and professional development that is offered to us really at no charge. That's where those kind of things become really important. Or it might be that we're paying folks who are going to do additional training to lead teams that are doing bias reviews of materials. That may be a stipend that we pay them or a small amount of money for their time for PD. So some of this is, you sort of appropriately zeroed in on the goal that is likely the most budget-intensive. But some of this is just, and one of the reasons we put some of these things on the district improvement plan, it's really just a matter of our administrative team and our other staff that are involved saying, no, this is a priority. We all have 50 things to do, but I only have time to do 20, and this has to be among the 20. And the other 30 will have to wait. But, you know, it is a concern, this budget situation and seeing where the state is and its development. And Carrie shared a document with a couple of us today that walked through that. I saw some news items today where the Speaker of the Massachusetts House was taking the governor to task a little bit over putting money here instead of there. I think we're all kind of, all of us in terms of school committee and school people, I think we're all entering a phase of being really concerned about what this budget looks like. The COVID money is done. You know, I think we've, thanks to Joe, Joe's stewardship and shepherding through this, have accounted for that over the course of two or three years where we're not looking at the edge of a cliff. We're looking at a ditch that we can hop over, that we can make. But yeah, it's of concern, it's of concern with much of what we do.
Thank you, Jake. And just as a quick follow-up, apologies for taking up space. When we are presented with the budget that you'd like us to consider, certainly, just I could speak, just for me, it would certainly be helpful to be, to connect what you presented to us today with that budget somehow. And as you said, I couldn't see, there's, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on professional development. I'd be curious to know what the budget needs for expanding the technology that we'd like to use, whether it be through training or through the different software that we would like to purchase licenses for, all of that. I think it would be helpful to kind of connect it, certainly for me. Thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely, Jose. Thank you for that. Joya, did you?
I will reserve my questions. They're not critical, it's more, I'm just curious about how it works on the inside and how we get reports, you know, in the order and the time we do. But this is comprehensive and important. And so at some later date, I'd love to hear more how it, how you all keep this front and center when there are 50 other things asking for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the district improvement plan as presented?
So moved.
Curtis moves. Do I have a second? Oh, second. Carrie, second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah.
I really do think we need another column with metrics. So could it be, could that motion be amended to say this plan with metrics identified?
What if we just ask that the administration consider making an addendum that we could vote at another time rather than holding up the plan? Would that be okay?
That works for me, that works for me. I'd love to just, it helps me understand what the plan is when I understand what the metrics are. But yes, that's fine if this is the work, but can we come back and talk about the metrics?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, that is fine, absolutely.
Great. Julia, you're comfortable with that? Okay, any other discussion?
All in favor?
Owen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Konstantina.
Elfin, by an aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Miller, aye. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. That motion passes.
Okay, I'm about to go into place with bad cellphone reception. I will come back, but I may miss the executive session.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, ready to move on to tuitions? All right, I'm gonna ask Joe to jump in and take over on this one, if you would, Joe.
So perhaps discussion after motion is moved and seconded, that the motion would be to approve the tuition rate as presented, which is $17,254 for fiscal year '25.
So moved.
Carrie moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
So this tuition rate was calculated based on the tuition agreement that was accepted last year. It's all kind of cut and dried, amounts to a little bit north of a 3% increase between fiscal year '24 and fiscal year '25. And the calculation's in front of you, but it's, I don't think there's a ton to discuss, but I'll open it up there.
Joe, my only question is, who signed the 2023 agreements? I can't figure out the signature.
I'm not recognizing that signature myself.
Yeah, okay.
Is Christina, that's not your signature, is it?
For New Ashford?
No, 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 for the Mount Greylock Regional School District.
Oh. Hold on.
The...
My signature is pretty distinct.
Looks like Curtis signed it, I'm just guessing based on the C.
Does the last name begin with an L?
My signature, I also have the motion and the vote. That this is what was in our file. I have the motion and the vote from last year from the school committee as well. That New Ashford signature is certainly...
So I guess my question is, who should be signing this on behalf of the district? Is it the chair? Is it the superintendent? The business manager?
It would be either, I would think that either the chair of the school committee or the superintendent, based on the vote of the school committee, would have had the ability to do that.
I know I've signed these in the past. So, and I'm actually having a hard time viewing the... It's only pulling up the first page, so I'm not seeing the whole thing right now. I don't know why. It could be my signature, but I can't see it.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Owen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Konstantina.
Elfin, by an aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
And we lost Steve, but that motion passes, thank you. Did anyone happen to write down when Steve kicked off by any chance?
Like 8:35, 8:36.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda, Carrie, do you have an MASC division report?
Yeah, I just wanted to let folks know that I sent out an email to all the members of Division Six. You should have each received one. If you could check your inboxes, it's just titled MASC Div 6 Meeting Invitation. It has a survey on it and an opportunity to sign up for a budget and finance workshop that we're gonna do virtually for the division on January 22. And if you can't find it, let me know, because that would be useful information. And Joe, I would love to have you join me in conversation with some staff members of MASC to talk about what we should be... We have a lot of regions in Division Six, a lot of regionals. So it would be great if we could do a little brainstorming on what would be useful to, especially new school committee members who may not be familiar with regional budgets. That'd be great, thanks.
Love to.
Awesome. Carrie, just as a follow-up, that is my signature.
It is.
It's Christina L.A. dot Conry.
Oh, wow.
Okay, yeah. I won't tell you what the L.A. stands for. You can figure it out. All right, any questions for Carrie before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, great. I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with intent to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim special education director contract.
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you. All in favor? Rule, I believe we need to do this via last name, so...
Owen, aye.
Conry, aye.
Konstantina.
Elfin, by an aye.
Green, aye.
Malloy, aye.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move into executive session. It is 8:43 PM. Joe, are you gonna create a breakout room? Thank you.
Okay, it is nine ten. We are back in open session. And on behalf of the school committee, I would like to make a motion to appoint Noel Sullivan as interim special education director and for an eighteen month contract for that position.
Second.
Contract as presented, right Christina?
Yes. Curtis, did you second that motion?
I did.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just want to thank, as we said in executive session, want to thank our administration and Noel Sullivan certainly for stepping into this position and all those who are going to support the special education directors throughout the rest of the year. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Conri, I.
Constantine, I.
Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, next up on the agenda, upcoming meetings. There is a policy subcommittee meeting January twenty fourth at five P M. There are finance subcommittee meetings, January twenty fifth at five P M and February eighth at five P M. Our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is February eighth at six P M. And there is a budget workshop, draft budget workshop and discussion February twenty ninth at five thirty P M. And March fourteenth at six P M is the fiscal year twenty five budget public hearing. Followed by a regular meeting, right? Yep.
Um, so are we doing any of these in person or is everything virtual?
I'm trying to think how we did these last year, but I'd have to go back and look.
It was all virtual.
It was all virtual.
Yep.
And Joe, did you want any of the finance committee or budget workshop stuff, any of that in person? We had talked about it might be better to do it in person, but I'm fine either way. I just wanted to circle back on that.
Honestly, I, I feel like we've hit a pretty good groove as far as being able to work together over Zooms. I, I don't feel the need to be in person. Um, and I also think that last year with the public hearing, I, I, I think we tend to get better turnout. When we're overs in our district, given the geography that people need to travel, so I'm I don't need to put us in person.
Okay. Okay. Um, any other? Yeah, Curtis.
Sorry, uh, I, I meant to bring this up earlier before the meeting started, but then I had to reset my router and just barely made it in time for the meeting. Uh, to the policy and governance, uh, team, is there any way we could move our meeting from the twenty fourth to Tuesday, the thirtieth? I have a conflict.
I can't do the thirtieth.
What I'll do Curtis is, uh, just, just, we'll work on this via email and, and we'll sort it out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I do not have any other items for discussion, any agenda requests for future meetings? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Julia moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis seconds, all in favor?
Bo and I.
Conri, I.
Constantine, I. Elfin, bye, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Great, it is nine fifteen and we are adjourned. Thank you everyone.
Thanks everybody.
Everybody.